I know, I got the chair out and everything for her.
She has to hold it. He has to hold it.
Okay, we will call to order the meeting for Shenandoah City Council held Wednesday, February 9th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Call the roll and notice that everybody is here. We're going to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, and then if you would like to stay standing with us, I'll say a quick invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm on the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Dear Lord, we coming for you tonight, and we say thank you for, uh, thank you for your grace, for your love, for your forgiveness. Thank you for everybody that came here tonight to participate in this meeting. Thank you for, uh, for people who care about the, uh, the forward direction of the city of Shenandoah, and they care about the neighbors that they live here with or they serve. We just ask for your hand of wisdom to be placed upon us tonight as we make our way through this agenda, and, uh, there are a couple of topics, there are going to be some, some good conversation, and we just ask that everybody approaches those conversations and, uh, with an open mind. Pray these things in your son's name and all God people said. Okay, well, good evening, everybody. That's on, couldn't tell if it was on or not. Uh, okay, well, that brings us right into, uh, item five, which is our Citizens Forum. And the first person we have speaking tonight is Ms. Esther Lum.
She can go first if she needs to. Um, Esther Lum, 31 South Emery Bend Place. Good evening, Council and Mayor. I've been speaking during this Citizens Forum for several months, and I appreciate the fact that normally Mayor Wheeler does a good job and consistently reminds us of the statutory limits on Citizens Forum. He didn't do that tonight, but I'd like to point out that there are similar rules that apply to council inquiry, and although they are printed in the agenda, I haven't read them aloud, and maybe they should be read aloud because basically the, the law limits council inquiry in three ways. One, you can inquire about something not on the agenda. Two, the responses are limited to a statement of existing policy or fact. And three, the only discussion that can be had is to place an, uh, place something on the future agenda. So I'm bringing this up because I have observed during council inquiry, some, but not all, council members endorse political candidates and express other opinions that do not fall into these three categories. And I know what you're all thinking, what about the First Amendment? That's a great question because I thought the same thing too, but I researched this and found a very recent 2020 case out of the Fifth Circuit. It's called Strata versus Rowe, and it involves the Brazos Valley Groundwater District. And what happened there is that the board prevented Strata, one of its own members, from speaking at a district meeting during a period of public comment as a quote "member of the public." So Strata sued, and he alleged a violation of his First Amendment rights. However, the court ruled against him and said, "The Texas Open Meetings Act is designed to protect the public from board member violations, not to allow the board members to circumvent their requirements by calling themselves members of the public." So the court even went on to compare the Texas law to similar restrictions on itself. And he said, they said that as a member of the public, the, the judges could appear in the town square, and they could endorse candidates for public office, but as a sitting federal judge, they would be barred from doing so. The court concluded by saying, quote, "Whatever Strata's rights otherwise might be, they were overcome by his status as a board member, and the board correctly prevented Strata from speaking at the meeting," end of quote. So the bottom line here is that council members are free to appear in the town square or social media, and you can endorse political candidates. Some of you are already doing that, but according to the Strata case, this kind of speech is absolutely not permitted in official meetings such as this, such as this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Ms. Betty Lahiri? Oh, I'm sorry, Betty Anderson, I've got, I've got Betty Lahiri on my mind, I'm sorry.
I have a meeting, uh, I have a church meeting on Wednesdays, and, uh, that's one of the reasons why it's hard for me to come to, uh, city council meetings, but, uh, I, I'm glad that we can watch them online, and I appreciate that. Uh, I am Betty Anderson, uh, 503 Rosewood, uh, Shenandoah resident for over 30 years, and I'm the duly elected precinct chairman for Precinct 31, which includes Shenandoah. I'm the last name listed on the primary election ballot if it's a contested race. It's my responsibility to help inform Precinct 31 Republicans before elections and encourage them to vote, okay? So what I'm doing tonight is part of my responsibility as an elected official to come before you and make this request. We've been blessed to be able to use the Shenandoah City Council Chamber for elections for many years, and I've been told by technicians that our site is a good location and we're very well organized. In fact, we're one of the best, so. Pat everybody here on the back, especially Kathy Ryer and, uh, Debbie Pilcher and others, uh, on staff who've just been very hospitable. Appreciate you. But we have one huge problem that developed several years ago. Um, several years ago, when Greg Smith was city administrator, there were a lot of new regulations that, um, the city council voted on, and, uh, without any prior notice to me, on the night before one of the primary elections, candidates set their signs outside the 100-foot marker from the voting location entrance, and that's a requirement by law, but Shenandoah police officers pulled the signs up the night before and threw them in a dumpster. And the next day, on Election Day, um, I was serving as election judge, and I was told that Shenandoah has a new sign ordinance, and signs were not allowed anywhere except in residents' yards. So this meant that Precinct 31 was the only voting location in Montgomery County with any kind of a sign ordinance whatsoever. And at that time, there were 88, um, precincts, voting precincts. Suddenly, candidates would, could not place their signs out at our election site to encourage registered voters to vote for them on Election Day. Signs along the freeway feeder would also have, they could have been a reminder for...
That's okay, no, we, we want to hear the point, for sure.
Okay, um, I didn't realize I had a limit. You didn't tell me I had a limit. Um, anyway, signs along the feeder are also a reminder for voters registered in other locations that they need to get to their election site that day, that it's Election Day. So I went to city council and complained, and, uh, the point is they deliberated, and they, um...
What's the ask? What's the ask? What, what can we help you with?
Um, I would like, okay, the bottom line is that, um, I res- I respectfully request that city council consider amending the Shenandoah Sign Code to allow a 36-hour window for political signs in front of the city complex, beginning at 5:00 PM the day before an election. That means that candidates would have time to set their signs out the day before the election because they, we now have 111 precincts in Montgomery County, so if a candidate is a countywide, uh, candidate, they've got 111 sites to set signs out, and they do not know that Shenandoah is not like all of the other 110 sites. So they put a lot of signs out.
We're going to talk about that, I mean, just a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you, Betty.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Betty. All right, bye-bye.
Thank you, Betty.
Okay, next up is Alex Warmath.
I'm Alex Warmath, I live at 11 Eatonshire Court here in Shenandoah. I'm excited to be a citizen in Shenandoah, have been for a long time and continue to be. I wanted to acknowledge something that I saw this past week, which I was excited to see. Obviously, Vision Parkway and Rogan's Mill runs right by the neighborhood that I live in, and for the first time, and I can't tell you how many months, or maybe years, I saw a Shenandoah policeman giving a car either a speeding ticket or a moving violation ticket. The speed on that piece of road is extremely high now. I mean, I walk it every day from my home up to the interstate and back, and I watch the traffic at various timelines during the day, and it is way over 45, and sometimes cars, we hear them at night locking up brakes and skidding through the stop sign from our home. So I would appreciate to see that our police force continued to enforce the speed limits in that road, and I appreciate seeing them doing that last week. On another point, different subject, um, I was looking at some things in our city ordinances here, and I think I realized that, and I was a little bit shocked to see that, that we don't have a code of ethics for our city employees or for you gentlemen who are, you gentlemen who are, uh, our elected officials. I find that almost unacceptable. In other words, I think we should have a, a code of ethics for our citizens, to protect our citizens, if nothing else. And I would certainly encourage that the city council and the mayor take under consideration to build a really good code of ethics for both our city employees and for you yourself. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Alex.
Appreciate your service.
Okay, well, as always, um, if you didn't get a chance to sign up and speak in this Citizens Forum, we do have a second one. I apologize that I did not state at the beginning that, that, uh, speakers are held to three minutes. Sorry about that, Betty. It's my fault. Um, but, uh, and I know you have a meeting to get to, but, um, certainly, certainly able to sign up for a second Citizens Forum if possible. So with that, we will move into, uh, council inquiry, which is item six. Does anybody have anything right now that they need to discuss or talk about?
Other than I filed for reelection, no.
Thank you, Ron. Okay, we will move into item seven then, which is discussion and possible action to approve a new banking institution.
Mayor and council, as requested at the budget workshop, we went out for, um, a bank and RFA for primary de- depository services. Um, we currently use Wells Fargo, um, as our current primary depository bank. Um, we did a RFA, um, in November, and we received four applications, um, Allegiance Bank, Frost Bank, Plains Capital Bank, and Wells Fargo, who we currently use. Uh, we use Valley View Consultant, um, group to help us narrow down and help us, um, get the most responses for the RFA, and I do have Tim Pinnion with them tonight here, and I also have the representative for the bank that staff has recommended we go with, which is Allegiance Bank. So I'm going to let Tim come up here and kind of do a little presentation to explain, um, the RFA and, um, the responses, and if there's any questions, he's, he's the guy to ask, so, yes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we, first of all, appreciate the opportunity to work with the city, uh, on the bank project. So we put together just a very short, uh, presentation to kind of walk quickly through the, the project that was involved. So as Lisa said, the, the purpose was to find a new, uh, depository institution. State law, uh, chapter 105 requires that cities go out for, uh, applications for their banking contract once every five years, and so the city was up for the renewal, up, it was time to go through that process. So, uh, the new agreement will begin on April 1st of this year, and the first period will be for two years, it'll end March, uh, of '24, and then we typically build in a, a two-year contract with three additional one-year renewals, and that allows the city just to kind of do a, a time check, just to make sure is everything going well with that bank. Normally it is, and you want to renew, uh, but that gives, uh, the city some leverage just to, to make sure that the, the bank is performing well. So there are a number of, uh, municipal and state codes that guide the process, and so we adhere to those, uh, and those kind of guide the steps that we take. So, um, one of the things that we take a look at is how many services, uh, the bank is, or the city is using with the bank, you know, how many checks you're writing, the kind of deposits you're making, that type of thing. And one of the things that we did too was to create a competitive environment. We expanded the area where you could solicit and receive the responses from. The normal, I guess, automat- the default, uh, limitation is just the city boundaries, but sometimes it makes sense to expand those boundaries, and so, um, the council approved, uh, an expansion of that boundary to include those four zip codes, and that allowed us to, to cast a wider net to, uh, send the application request of 24, uh, institutions. And then the next step that we take at Valley View is to contact all of those banks just to make sure, we're talking to the right person, because sometimes if you just take it to the local branch, they don't know what to do, and that it's not someone there that's going to respond, so we make sure we're talking to the right person. We let them know in advance, this is coming, and, uh, so that they're ready for it. And then the last thing we do on the, on our next step is to, to draft the RFA, so we kind of build out the specifications of, this is what the city needs, and this is what they're looking for. So we also advertise, that's a requirement, uh, and then we post it on the city's website, and we sent emails to all of the banks we contacted, and then we held up a Zoom conference call and invited all 24 banks to attend that. We had five that attended, and four of those five, all but Wood Forest, did, um, submit an application to the city, so we got it, we're very pleased with the response that we got, uh, to the application. The evaluation criteria, I think, just kind of speaks to the level of complexity that the, the bank provides for the city and the things that you want to look at. Um, you're looking at cost of services, the different types of rates that they're paying, uh, convenience, the, the quality of the services, and, and we also want to make sure that the, the institutions are financially sound, so those are things that we're looking at. So we looked at what, what the city's balances have been over the last 12 months, and so for the last 12 months, the city has maintained an average of about 17 and a half million on deposit with Wells Fargo. And then we gave them that fee schedule based on the services the city was using, and we asked each bank, what would you charge for this volume of services? So you see that on the next line in red, and you can see, uh, Allegiance and Plains Capital were a little over a thousand, and then Frost and Wells Fargo were quite a bit more, and part of that is the balance assessment fee, uh, which is one, some banks charge, others don't, but it can be significant, especially when you have large balances, and so that was really the difference there. So we take those fees, we, we look at waivers that the banks offer, and we kind of come up with a bottom line number, what are we looking at financially that each bank will cost? But that's kind of the first step, so we start with, look at what it's going to cost. But then banks also offer incentives because of those balances, they want to incentivize the city to keep balances with them, but they pay very different rates. So you can see across the top that earnings credit rate, uh, it ranged from 65 basis points at Allegiance, uh, down to 20 basis points at Frost, so kind of a big range there, so that impacts your bottom line. And everyone but Frost was paying enough of an earnings credit rate along with your, with the ECR, that you offset all of your fees at all but Frost Bank. Uh, so the bank, uh, the city's already coming out to where you're not, you have three options to not pay any bank fees at all. And then the last thing we want to look at is, is what interest rate would you pay us on the balances that we don't need to cover those service fees? And so we factor that in next to see who's offering the best rates, then how does that impact the bottom line? And so that's, that's really that line at the bottom, so we look at the, the two, that first two-year contract period, and then the five-year contract period, and we factor all of those elements in, uh, and so you can see clearly from that number, especially looking at the five-year number, uh, Allegiance Bank was clearly the best return financially for the city. So the next thing that we do, well, we also want to factor, and sometimes they'll offer additional incentives, they may, uh, offer cash incentives because there's a cost involved in changing banks, so we factored those in as well, and still, uh, Allegiance was clearly the best option for, uh, for the city, based purely on, uh, finances, uh, that doesn't necessarily be, you know, that's not necessarily the full, uh, considerations, so, um, you want to make sure that it's a bank that's going to provide your needs. So they, uh, the team had, uh, at Shenandoah, had, had Allegiance come in and give a demonstration so you could look at their online platform, talk through the process. The city has a little bit of an advantage with Allegiance because they're currently a secondary bank with the city, so you already have a, an existing relationship with Allegiance Bank, uh, and so that's helpful. So based on, especially the financial performance, and then the, uh, the satisfactory and, and good demonstration that they had, the staff is recommending that the city award the new depository contract to Allegiance Bank, and Valley View concurs with that, uh, with that recommendation. So that's kind of a quick overview, are there any questions that I could help answer on, on any aspect of this?
All right. Thank you. Okay, so do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the banking contract with Allegiance Bank.
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilman Fletcher, I have a second by Councilman Raymaker, do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item eight, discussion and possible action to award a contract for the ACP water line replacement project.
Do you like, me give a little background?
Might as well.
Okay. Um, so, Mayor and Council, uh, this is regarding the project to replace the asbestos cement pipe, um, in four different locations throughout the city. Uh, as you know, this is a continuation of a multi-year plan to get all of the asbestos cement pipe out of the city, uh, when we started experiencing some failures in that pipe, um, starting a few years ago. So we had, uh, the project was bid on February 2nd, bids were opened, and we received seven bids for the project. Thank you, Chris, for pulling that up, and you can see that G and A Boring Directional was the low bidder at $580,011.20. Blile Engineering checked references with the, with contractor, uh, double-checked all the numbers to make sure that they were accurate, and they are, and the recommendation is to award the project to G and A Boring Directional. Uh, just one final point here, there's about $1.4 million funded for this project, uh, so we had a significantly lower, uh, bid than, than somewhat anticipated. It is a really good price, uh, we knew it was going to come in lower than what was initially funded, uh, because we had had some reductions in the scope of the project when we discovered that the 45 crossing was PVC, so it would not be, need to be replaced in several large sections within the hospitals, uh, area that were also PVC. We, we thought they were, uh, ACP, um, and so we, we had anticipated it coming in lower, but this is, this is a very good price, uh, for the work that we're asking for, so that's our recommendation.
I just want to reiterate that you said that Blile Engineering is, uh, they're familiar with G and A Boring Directional, and they endorse, they're, they're, you're good with them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move that we award the, uh, the, uh, project to G and A Boring.
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilman Scotto, I have a second by Councilman Raymaker, do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item nine, discussion and possible action to award a contract to the Research Force Lift Station Rehabilitation Phase Two, and, uh, I'll just read these out and we'll, we'll do these together. Uh, A, approval of $85,000 in additional funding for construction, and B, approval of the $288,700 project to solid bridge construction. And Joseph, you want to give us a little bit of?
Yes, absolutely. Um, so this project was bid on February 1st, uh, we received nine bids for this project, which I'll just want to make the point of, of all the projects I've done here at the city, this is the most bidders that I've ever seen on a project, so we were very excited about the response that we received. Solid Bridge, who we are familiar with and have done a lot of projects, was the low bidder at $288,700, because that includes Alternates 6 and 8 on the bid tabs. And you can see here that they were a, a good, a good bid underneath, uh, CFG Industries, but that the, those low bids were all pretty close, so we're, we're confident with the, the pricing that we got was, was a good price. Now, the additional $85,000, uh, for funding, we're going to need additional, we, we don't have enough budgeted for this because there were some, um, there were some reasons for the higher price. One, we anticipated, another one was kind of a surprise, but it made sense once it was explained to us. The, the first increase in costs that we knew we would have is, between the time that this project was funded and the design was completed, one of the riser pipes in the lift station blew, um, which necessitated us adding the replacement of those riser pipes. That wasn't, that wasn't anticipated in the original funding, so there was one cost that needed to be added. Uh, the second, um, and, and we confirmed this with the subcontract, sub-engineering firm Baird &amp; Gilroy, um, the price of electrical components has just gone through the roof. Uh, and so that bid came in much higher than our estimate, um, but it's, it's normal for today's pricing. Uh, so those are, those are two of the reasons. So we're, we're confident that this is good pricing by solid bridge construction, and staff is asking for the additional $85,000 in funding, and then ultimately, uh, awarding the project to solid bridge construction for the $288,700.
Do I have a motion?
Need a motion to approve?
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilman Cloud to approve, I have a second by Councilman Broad, do we, are we, we're talking for both A and B?
Yes, uh, approve both A and B.
Um, do we have any discussion? And the first question I would ask would be, how long is this bid good for? And when do we think we can, when do we think we can start so that we don't run into the problem again of rising costs or supply issues or?
Well, as soon as, if council recommends approval of this, uh, we'll get in contact with Solid Bridge right away to set a pre-construction meeting and, and get a notice to proceed as soon as possible.
How long are they locked into this bid for? 30 days, probably?
Well, with, with the bid, it's going to be longer, uh, when they do the bidding process. Can't remember how much we did the bid bond for, uh, oftentimes 90 days, so...
Okay.
We'll, we'll be able to get this started and keep this price locked in.
The only other question I would have, Lisa, is, uh, would it be better to separate out the overage as a different line item, just for transparency, or is it better to put the whole project in together and just show that we went over?
So what we'll do is, we'll bring it back as a budget amendment, and it'll be in amendment line on, so if you pull a report from ENCODE, it'll show it as an amendment.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, I can bring that next meeting, just for a one, like a, instead of waiting for the quarterly, so it's transparent.
Perfect, thank you. Any more discussion without the other one?
Yeah, I, I think it's fantastic that we got nine bids, because I can recollect when I started here...
Lucky to get one.
Nobody, and I mean nobody, wanted to bid on our projects because of the environment that was here in City Hall. But now we get plenty of bids, and also for those who like to claim that there isn't transparency, you see all the bids that were given, so there is nothing underhanded about this. All of our bids are presented the same way. They're presented in open session, just like we did now, and so when I hear these outlandish claims of lack of transparency, I don't know what it is that you're looking for, so I'm sorry. But anyway, it's great that our reputation is so fantastic, and I thank Blile and, and Joseph and Kathy for making that environment.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0 to approve. Thank you, Joseph.
And Lisa. And Blile Engineering.
Okay, we'll move to item 10, which is discussion and possible action to approve funding for the Pinecroft Forest Main upsizing.
Yes, so, so background on this. If you recall, this is discussed briefly at the Budget Workshop. And City Council asked staff to bring it back after the new year. So we brought it back for discussion now. So Blile Engineering provided a collection system model, I believe it's last year or the year before. And it showed that a force main would be, would need to be upsized here on Pinecroft Drive, taking the waste from the Pinecroft Lift Station up to the Research Force Lift Station to handle the additional loading from the new hospital tower and the other developments that are happening in that area. And as you know, the hospital expansion, it's moving along quickly. I, I know they are hoping to be finished by the end of the year. It's a pretty aggressive schedule, but they are moving pretty aggressively on that. So staff take a look at, originally, we're looking at upsizing it from a four-inch line to a six-inch. And then we looked at upsizing that to an eight-inch, just so there wouldn't be any future need for upsizing, which is a very expensive endeavor. Whereas if you, if you go with a larger pipe now, it's really pennies on the dollar if you can avoid a, a further replacement down the road. So the eight-inch upsizing is going to be recommended. And let's see, pull up the pricing here. Or maybe Chris has it for me. Oh, here we go. So staff is recommending funding $575,000 for the design and construction of the project. If this is approved, we'll have Blile Engineering start right away on the design. And the goal would be to have that design finalized, the project bid. Hopefully, we get good bids and award that and have it constructed so it is ready to handle those additional flows from the development that's hand, that's happening in that area. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So what would the timeline be on this?
So I'll, I can, I can guess on the design. You know, John may have a better guess with his staff, but if, if you count on, say, 120-day for design. Okay, he's nodding. Thirty days to bid the project and then 90-day construction. You could have this finalized before the, the end of the new year.
Make a motion, we approve the $575,000 to update the Forest Main upsizing.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Broad. I have a second by Councilman Fletcher. Do we have any discussion?
So this is a new budget item?
So it was presented at the Budget Workshop, but it was, council wanted to come back and look at it now.
And what, what fund would this come out of?
So it'll be, it'll be water sewer. So it'll be a transfer in from water sewer to the Fund 400, which is capital project. Which we'll do as an amendment. And I'll do it for that flat rate. And then once the bids come in, we can always decrease or just so it's on the books.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was.
And there's savings with the ACP project that'll help offset that as well, so.
Any more discussion?
So we're, we're still going at six months, beginning to end?
Thereabout.
Roughly?
Yes.
Anything that would preclude us really from waiting until this Budget Workshop?
Well, the danger is, you know, if the hospital finalizes their construction and then they fill out really quick and we start hitting our peak flows, it will, it will overwhelm the capacity of our Pinecroft Lift Station. Chances of that happening are low, but I don't even like having the chance that it could happen.
Especially with the hospital.
Great.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Item 11, discussion and possible action to adopt the following ordinance. An ordinance by the City Council of the City of Shenandoah, Texas, declining to approve the change in rates requested by InterGee Texas as stated in your agenda packet. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion by Councilman Broad. I have a second by Councilman Cloud. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Good housekeeping. Item 12, discussion and possible action to appoint members to the Sick Pool Committee.
Council, this is a routine process that we follow every year. Some people drop off the sick pool and we either reappoint or we appoint somebody new. And that's just what we're doing here.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Raymaker. I have a second by Councilman Scotto. Do we have any discussion? I'd just like to say thank you to the folks who are willing to serve on the Sick Pool Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Item 13, discussion and possible action to adopt filing ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Shenandoah, Texas, adding a new subpart to 15 to the existing section 70-81A and providing for an effective date. Do we have any discussion around this?
City Council, this is an amendment to the ordinance. We've had some problems in the past with vehicles and trailers extending into the public right-of-way street. And this ordinance is meant to eliminate that as a safety hazard to people who are legally driving on our public streets.
Thank you, Bill. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilman Raymaker. I have a second by Councilman Broad. Do we have any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Honestly, thank you because I get calls all the time from residents and it's, enough's enough.
Yeah, this, this is just a safety issue.
Absolutely.
And it's our jobs to address safety issues, so thank you.
Yeah, I know, I've been past the site where the main problem is. And it's like, ah, there's not always a car there to block that. And it's, if it was in lesser light conditions, it's, it's a hazard sticking out into the road.
We've had several near misses, people almost hitting it, especially at night.
Me. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Item 14, discussion regarding parking at the toddler park. This is discussion only.
Yes, Mayor and Council. At the January MDD Board meeting, the MDD Board took a look at some of the designs. Thank you, Chris, for pulling that up. To add some additional parking. Staff had originally presented some angle parking there on the east side of the property. And they expressed a desire to look at perpendicular parking, which you see here before you. The MDD Board has been discussing this because they have an interest in funding the project, but requires its staff to bring this to council today to give, give an update and get any input from the, the City Council members and Mayor regarding this project. Just a few items here. You can see on the east side, we're able to get four parking spaces. If you put them perpendicular to the Shenandoah Drive, one of those will be required to be ADA van accessible. And then you can see the offloading and then the ramp up into the main park pathway that would be required for that parking space. To put that in, we'll need to remove, there's a live oak there that will need to be removed. We'll have to rework some of the storm drain inlets in that area to get that in there. You'll also see an, an additional option of the two parking spaces on the shoulder. That would necessitate cutting into the, the front of the park by six feet to create a parking space where you could get the car off of the roadway. However, when you unload, you'd be unloading into the travel lane of Shenandoah Drive. And it would also necessitate the removal of bedding, crate myrtles. It would get you additional spaces. Staff recommendation is not to add those two spaces just because it's really going to affect the beauty of the park. And you're still going to be offloading into the roadway. But we just wanted to get this before you and get any input or answer any questions you may have.
I like, I like it. It's the best design that I've seen so far of any of the ones that we've had. I, I'm okay even with the two parallel spots there because if I was unloading my kiddo, I'd still unload him on the other side of the car. And that way, we wouldn't ever be short on spaces and none of those cars would have to park out into the street. And I, I can say that as an MDD Board member, that it's something that we've been interested in. And I can still picture Mike Sorge next to me, how happy he would be that we'd be moving out of this.
While I agree with you, I, I think it's a great idea to go forward with this. I personally am of the other opinion, I don't like the two parking spaces on the curb for a couple of different reasons. I think it's additional costs that we're probably not going to use. As you can imagine, having a three-and-a-half-year-old, I use that toddler park a little more often now than what I thought I was going to. I, I don't know that I've ever seen more than three cars parked there. It's usually one or two, usually, you know, right there on the curb. And so I think three is probably enough. And if, if more show up, then we're not in any worse situation than, than what we are right now. I doubt that we're going to have a party at the park to that degree, but maybe. But I think we could probably save the money, save the aesthetics, save the safety issue if people still trying to get out and unload kids into the street. And, and provide plenty of parking with the design over on the east side of the park, which I really like, by the way. I think that's a, a good design. I, I get that we're going to lose a nice, big, mature oak tree, and I hate that. But we can plant more trees. We can't plant more kids if something happens, so I like it. I appreciate MDD looking at it.
I could live without the two parallel spots. And we already have a plan on how to build it if we ever needed it anyway.
Well, that's a good point, yeah. If we, if we run into a situation where we, where there, you know, five or six cars at a time there, then okay, then we can go back and look at it.
So I know part of the discussion that MDD had was the fact that it would be wasteful for us to put these four parking spaces over here and then still allow parking on the street because it doesn't take care of the problem. So this would become a no parking zone, and that's why it's parallel parking. I mean, what's the point of spending this kind of money and you're still going to allow parking on the street? Kind of defeats the purpose of having safe parking.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
I know the argument is, well, they chose not to park there and, well, you can't regulate or provide ordinances for stupid.
I, I, so I don't disagree with that. And I think you could still come back later and add those two if you had to, you know? You could always add them. It's hard, much harder to take them. It's hard, it's harder to take, yeah, it's harder to take them away if you don't need them.
The $100,000, is that for all the spaces?
So.
Or is that just for the, the four?
So that estimate was based on the angle parking that was originally looked at. With adding that space there, it's probably going to be around 110,000. But you're, you're around that 100,000.
But that's, is that, well, I guess my question, is that covering both the perpendicular spaces and the parallel spaces together?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and if, when, when we get a final decision, we can rework that estimate because we will want this to be designed and engineered to make sure the drainage works and.
I will say with the, with the way the handicap and the ramp is, because this is getting better, that perpendicular spot. I've generally been opposed to that because, again, the park was originally designed as just a walk-up pocket. You know, we, we see more and more people, of course, as, as a summer, you're going to see more people choosing to drive as opposed to, as opposed to walking. And, you know, we've talked about it, it's a park, if it's a walking park, it limits who can use it. So I like, I like us thinking about this, and it's on that weird curve. I've been a fan of having the, the parallel parking, the ideas. Everybody would unload in a protected side because you'd unload from the passenger side, your kids. But the cost is reasonable, MDD has the money, is willing to fund it. What is the cost savings from a mobilization perspective of not doing these two parallel spots and doing these four? Is there, is there any, there, there can't be any significant cost for that small?
I don't think you'd really see a difference in the mobilization for that.
I, I think then I would agree with some of the others that if, if the consensus is the perpendicular, then we just do those four, those four spots and leave, leave the curb intact. That's, you know, again, my, my consensus would be to put four parallels, just widen the street out. But that doesn't seem to be where everybody else is at. So if we're going to take, take, take the trouble to go put this stuff on the east side, I don't see why we also need to mess up the front of the park.
Right, I agree.
I agree.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's a, so that's a recommendation of the MDD then?
Yeah, maybe put something together and bring it back and.
Do, do that, do that east, the east four spots with the handicap, handicap ramp.
MDD is going to pay for the whole thing.
Yeah. Is there going to be the, the spots? I can't tell from that scale. So if I get out, if I'm parking in, say, the east most spot and I get out, is there going to be a path to walk? Or is it going to be walking in grass? So I'm parking in a non-handicap spot that's the far, furthest onto the east.
So it depends on what parks there. If it's a passenger car, you'll have space. If it's a long bed truck, you'll have to go in the grass. And they're, they're 20-foot deep.
That's what, okay.
Parking stalls.
Okay.
And, and nine foot, nine foot wide.
Well, that's what I was, you know, across the front, kind of. If you extended the, the blue handicap, if you extended that across the front, would that?
You, you could do that and then add your parking curb stops.
Yeah.
And.
It's a thought, I mean, it shouldn't cost, it shouldn't cost that much more to do that.
Worth looking at.
To extend it, you need to extend it a little further out.
Well, just take, see with the, the blue, the blue ramp across the, the south side, just bring it all the way across the front with curb stops.
An additional six feet.
Yeah.
I just.
No, that's.
I think that would be useful.
That's a valid point.
Not a problem.
Yeah, it's at least worth looking at. I mean, it can't cost that much in concrete.
It's not, not for this beating, but then on another day, then we probably should chat about, like, would you allow people to park there overnight? So that those spaces don't get gobbled up by people that maybe live nearby. I, I don't, I'm just.
I know the answer to that question, but like you said, we'll bring that up for later.
Yes.
Okay, anybody else, anything on, any questions for Joseph? If not, thank you, Joseph, again.
Awesome.
Thank you, MDD. Item 15, discussion regarding political signs at City Hall. This is a discussion only.
Council, if you notice, the excerpt from the sign ordinance currently allows political signs to be placed at 5:00 PM on the day before Election Day. And they need to be picked up by 7:00 AM on the day after the election. So roughly a 24-hour or so window. And I'm going to ask Ms. Anderson to correct me if I'm wrong. But it was my understanding that part of the request was to allow more than just one sign per candidate.
I'm sorry, I spent too much time elaborating and not getting to my reasons for lifting the sign ordinance.
So currently, the ordinance, as you can see, allows one sign per candidate. And we have a request to extend that window and to allow more than just one sign per candidate. And that's only on Election Day when we're a polling location. So we, we host maybe a couple of elections a year, including our own. So this would apply to those elections as well, whenever we're a polling location. The only time that we have been a site for early voting is, I believe, the community center flooded one year, something like that. So we, they, they had early voting here too. But typically, that doesn't happen.
Okay, yeah, I, I mean, John and I have got it on the agenda here. And I think that we can do better than one sign, especially because we do want to protect our polling location. I wouldn't want Betty to have to think she's got to go someplace else to, to, to hold an election. So we, we like having the elections here. The residents like that their easy access is here. And I think we can bump up the number of signs to something reasonable, so.
And we also have the large. And we also have the large sign that we put right on the service road to indicate that it is a polling location.
I can't remember the dimensions of it. It's taller than I am, that's for sure.
Yeah, it's huge.
So I probably would argue the opposite. Going to early voting in other places, it's total chaos and from the time that you, before you even get into the parking lot, let alone try to find a parking space because all the signs that are everywhere in which direction, that almost make it avoidable to even want to go and vote there, to be honest. And then you have the mob on top of that. I don't think that's what we want in Shenandoah, in my personal opinion. With people that I've talked to around the city in regards to our sign ordinance and this, particularly, I think the last thing we want to see is signs beginning from Wellman Road all the way to, you know, the hotel sign over here and our whole front be devoured with political signs. I don't think that that sends any good message to anybody about voting for any one particular person because then it just becomes a free-for-all list and whoever gets here earliest gets the best signage and, you know, the way that it's been with one sign, there's ample places that you're able to get good signage when people are pulling in that you can actually see what's going on and who... And at this point, when they come to our polling place, most everybody already knows who they're going to vote for. There's not a big sway of candidates in our precinct here, anyway. So I would hate for us to end up like the early voting poll that we all go to at the community center.
Right, and we know that that community center, they're unlimited there and so I'd say maybe we could cap it at like five, something like that.
Absolutely not.
And the city property.
I like the one, I could see for advertising that, you know, we open it up another maybe 12 hours earlier, let the sign be there a little earlier, but I'm also, having lived here, I love the fact that Shenandoah, we have the giant vote sign, we have some political signs out. One is an easy number to count to. If you have more than one, you're wrong. It's, it makes it look nice and clean, it doesn't make us look overwhelming, it keeps the place classy as much as possible. And, but I wouldn't be opposed to letting them come out a little earlier, but...
We've got need it early.
Okay.
Five is, five is like...
5:00 PM to 7:00 AM, okay? Works for me, then.
And if we did approve more signs, we're always going to revisit it to see how it looks, so I think we could allow it to be a bit more than the one, so.
Yeah, I'm for definitely putting a cap on the number of signs and I agree with the effect that the signs have, the aesthetic effect that the signs have on our, on our city hall here. So I'm for putting a cap on the number of signs.
Well, they're only 18 by 24 at Election Day, it's, you know, 36 square foot signs up.
Right, right.
So I probably would go with two. I would be in favor of allowing a four-by-four sign rather than an 18 by 24 sign or 28 sign. Allowing the larger sign where there's more signs.
So I guess I look at this from a little bit different angle. I mean, number one, I think you could expand the hours and I know, Betty, you say you're not looking for that, but I can tell you as a candidate...
Racing around.
Look, if, even if we let them start, like, say 7:00 AM on the day before election, give them that whole day, that makes a huge difference than having to start at 5:00 PM because then a lot of times you're out till 11, 11:30 at night putting signs out. And then, and then really, it's picking them up. Now, I was always, maybe it's just the way I view it, I always went out first thing in the morning, people didn't even know I yanked my sign out of their yards, but I would even say give them maybe longer on the day after election, maybe, so maybe like 7:00 AM on the day before and 5:00 PM on the day after. Just give them enough time to put them out and go pick them up because I get that some people are, have a lot more signs than what we as local candidates have and a lot more locations to go to. Having, having said that, man, I for a long time have been of the mindset that only one sign, and really it has nothing to do with the politics of it or even the aesthetics of it, it's that we limit other people to one sign, you know? So I look at like real estate agents, for instance. Well, they only get to have one sign, so why is it fair that we as politicians get to vote ourselves extra signs, but we tell them, no, you only get to have one? It just doesn't feel right, it doesn't pass the eye test to me. I shouldn't be able to tell everybody else when it comes to our sign ordinance, you only get one, but because I'm running for mayor, I get to have as many as I want, you know? That's just the way I look at it. But what I will say is, and all of you up here probably will think about this as I say it, we all put our signs right up here in the main entrance and then how many times do you see somebody pulling off Wellman? And you're like, ah, you know, and you know they didn't see a sign, right? And so maybe I'm open to the idea of...
One on Wellman and one on the front.
One on Wellman and one at the front entrance, so like if we designated a spot...
Wellman's not City Hall.
Wellman's not City Hall, so that's our next problem, is that's the hospital.
Yep.
So we would have to have that discussion with the hospital or...
Candidates have to have that discussion with the hospital.
Or as you're coming through from the hospital parking lot to City Hall, there is some green space there that is city property that we could allow, okay, one sign at this entrance into the City Hall parking lot, one sign off of the feeder road, City Hall parking lot, just a suggestion. That would be about the most I'd be in favor of and that would be the only reason why is just because they can come in from multiple angles.
You've got like three approaches. If you miss the main entrance, you still can catch the last one.
Yeah, but if you miss the main entrance, you drove past it and you saw the signs, you know?
Joseph, after we have the construction project here with the police cruisers, how much green space is actually going to be left over there?
That's going to be all on the west side of that parking lot, so it should be, it shouldn't be in the way if they wanted to use the median green space there or anywhere else. Now, we're actually, the four northmost lots aren't even going to have a cover because that's where the, eventually, future gate would go and those lots would be lost.
So I'd also mention that a candidate can have a mobile sign. Doesn't have to be in the ground, it can be on a vehicle.
All good points.
So they can have a mobile sign that is larger than 18 by, what is it, 36 or whatever it is, 18 by 24?
And for the record, I can't speak to what happened several years ago, but nowadays, we don't just pick up signs and throw them away.
Right.
We try to give people an opportunity to come get them if they choose to.
Well, I'm sure the ask is going to be for this to come back as an agenda item again. Yeah, as an action item, so I think we probably need to give Bill some sort of direction. My thought process would be, you know...
More time.
Well, a little, oh, I thought you meant more time for the, for the agenda item.
No, no.
I say, yeah, more time on when they can put them out and then maybe...
More time when they pick them up.
More time when they pick them up and then maybe two signs in designated locations. And I don't even know if you can do that, but somehow some designated location says, can't go, can't go, you can't just string them all over the yard. But that's just me.
I still like the one. I like, because I, you know, as Ted pointed out, you can have one and you can park your truck in the parking lot for your second one.
Well, that's a good point. I didn't think about that.
I mean, that's what he just brought up, yeah.
That seems reasonable to me.
I mean, you got your one that you're allowed to put in our ground and if you, if you want to catch people coming in off Wellman, if you think that's a big draw...
Then you have on a vehicle that you have stationed.
Get a sign on a vehicle that catches all that.
I'm even open and to having, you know, a larger sign because it's not a residential area, it is a commercial space.
The 45 mile an hour traffic?
We have them all over the place.
Well, yeah, but I mean, because you're going down the feed, right? You're not driving through the neighborhood.
Right, because it's larger, you're going to see it.
Yeah.
You know? I'm open to even making, you know, I like the one sign, you can do a mobile sign and then, you know, a larger sign would be, I'm okay with that.
So how big, you say larger?
What's the next size up after this one?
I'd bet Seattle, standard sizing.
Well, you go four by four, it's currently the, our ordinance for commercial spaces is eight by four, four by eight, 13 square feet. That's huge.
That's huge, I don't want that.
Yeah, that's why I say we can limit it to four by four to where it's not the huge, huge one, it's half that size.
The large one, I'd be concerned that when people pull out of, onto the feeder, that they might not see around it.
Well, they can't, it can't be in a, it can't be in a...
Roadway, yeah.
Right away, so they can't put...
Well, as long as we have that copy, yes.
Well, I was about to say, now, something, depending upon, we're spending the most time on any...
We've got eleven for district pick.
Yeah, but that's what I was about to say, depending upon the election, you may have more visual signage clutter, if you want to call it that, with what you're talking about, the one bigger sign than you would having a bunch of little signs. I mean, what, I guess you have to, what are we trying to accomplish? I don't know if I'd want to go that big. 18 inches by 24, maybe go a little bit bigger than that, maybe go 36 by 36 or something, that seems huge, but...
It's three by three.
Three by three, yeah.
It seems like the common size is 12 by 24, I mean, like 18 by 24 or 18 by 30.
A three by three is going to be about the size of that panel over there in front of Bill.
Oh, down here, yeah.
The section of the...
Yeah, probably.
I just didn't think that one sign was enough, so.
I just, I agree with everybody else. I think by the time you show up at a polling place on the day, you know who you're voting for. And I'm not sure even if candidates would be spending the money on a three by three sign for here because, again, we've reached out, you've done your block walks, you, I mean, on Election Day, you show up here, you're going to go make your vote.
Okay, so Ron's in favor of more signs, maybe as many as three. Ted's stuck with one, but he wants to go bigger. John is two.
The only two and the mobile.
Two plus a mobile. Charlie?
Two.
Two plus a mobile.
A one, one mobile.
So I think Bill probably, if he could draft some sort of...
Draft something that catches all that.
Yeah, draft something that when we vote on it, we can decide between those factors.
So it's either one and three quarters sign or...
Okay, all good times. Okay, well, with that, we will move into our second citizens forum. I did not have anybody to speak, but if anybody would like to come speak, yes, Ms. Betty Anderson would like to come speak for three minutes on agenda or non-agenda items.
Agenda items, I didn't get to finish my spiel. A lot of your discussion was not really based on my reasons for this. First of all, having any ordinance for signage makes us the only voting location in Montgomery County that had, that limits signage on Election Day. We now have 111 precincts, so I'm quite frankly embarrassed that I'm the precinct chairman of an election site where we have a sign ordinance. It's also a free speech issue for the, for the candidates who work hard to run for office and want to notify voters that today is Election Day. And our site has freeway visibility, it has feeder visibility, it reminds people, oh gosh, when they see a lot of signs, it looks like an election site. That's what the other 110 precincts look like, a lot of signs, a lot of election signs. I want our precinct 31 to look like the 110 other election sites in Montgomery County. I want it to look like the place where you vote here. And another thing that you probably are not taking into account, precinct 31 includes Conroe, south of Highway 242. It includes Shenandoah, west of I-45, but it also includes Alden Bridge, west of Gosling. That's a pretty good distance and the people who live over there don't know where Shenandoah City Hall is located, the municipal complex. And it's a transient area, the Woodlands is, there are a lot of people who come and go, move in. And I talk to a lot of people who don't know exactly where to go and I try to give them the information that they need, so for them, College Park High School is a better location for an election site. I would rather have it here. This is more convenient for me, I live right just a few blocks away, okay? I think it's a good location to, for all of the precinct, when you consider the entire precinct, because even the people who live in Alden Bridge, they can come down 242 and then turn south and they can find it, but a lot of times, they don't know exactly where to turn in. When they have the signs, it's their indicator to turn in. So anyway, again, I'm requesting to lift the ordinance for election signage, not for real estate signs, but elections on Election Day.
Thank you, Betty.
Thanks, Betty.
Okay, that brings us to item 17, which is city administrator updates. That would be Kathy.
Counsel, I have a couple of quick ones for you. First of all, Troy is absent tonight because he has been invited to join a committee who is doing the TPCA audit of another agency, so that speaks very highly of him and the respect that our department has now. So he should be back, I think he's only going to be gone a few days. Secondly, we received a project funding request letter for our Texas Water Development Board loan and the next step is it will go to the board for consideration in March. It's going to the board with a recommendation from staff to approve.
Correct.
So assuming that all plays out like we're expecting, our funding should occur in October.
Awesome.
So we're moving in the right direction.
That's great.
That's all I've got.
Okay, that brings us to council inquiry. We'll start with Council McCloud.
I'm good tonight.
I'm good as well.
Council Muscato?
Nothing.
Kathy answered the question I was going to ask about how the water board loan was going, so it wasn't good.
Council Raymaker?
Could you have Troy go over his police strategic plan? It's a lot like our capital improvement plan.
Yeah.
But I know that they've put in a lot of time and, you know, they always are updating the plan, but people aren't always aware of it, but a lot of planning into staffing and budgeting of what we're going to need in the future, so I think Troy would like a chance to present that.
I'll talk to him when he gets back. All right.
Okay, well, with that, I don't really have anything tonight, other than I would like to say happy Valentine's Day to all the ladies in the room, especially our staff and strategic partners.
Isn't that your anniversary?
It happens to be my anniversary as well, so I never forget it. Makes it easy. No, but in all sincerity, we appreciate everything, all the staff does for the city, but Monday's y'all's day, so at least as far as we're concerned. So thank you very much for everything you do for us.
We did, we did pass through the banking one so fast that I didn't get to thank Lisa for all the hard work that she's done on making all these things happen, so.
That is correct.
Yes. Thanks, Lisa.
And Joseph, you too, happy Valentine's Day. Those are great projects that you brought to us.
We love you, man.
I would say that Lisa's saved us money.
Yeah.
Hey, the ACP folks came in low.
I said you saved about $900,000, right?
All right, well, with that, we're going to adjourn the meeting. Thanks for coming tonight, everybody. We adjourn the meeting at 8:10. Thanks.